All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 6, 2020 work session for city council. Starting here at 5:30, we were a minute late. We had a tech problem, but we are here and thank you for joining us. So Ms. Berner, welcome back. If you would give us a roll call, please.
Yeah, Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Here.
Councilman Graham.
Here.
Councilwoman Nowkowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Cobb.
Here.
Councilwoman Eggleston.
Yep.
And Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Seven members present.
All right, thank you very much. And tonight's invocation will be by Mr. Cobb.
Airhead, my father gave us the guidance to represent the citizens of this community real well. Gives us the strength to do what we think would be right. Watch over our military personnel, women, men, watch over our first responders. And help us get out of this pandemic. In his name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much, sir. And moving on to the pledge, Mr. Graham has the flag as he usually does. Thank you, sir. The pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
And we're getting better getting sanitized here.
Yeah, we are. Thank you, Mr. Graham, again for that. All right, let's see. Action on minutes, communications, city manager report. You didn't have anything under your report, did you, Mr. Bridge? We're just gonna go all the way down to other business?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Comments from members of the public. Anything on your end, Mr. Bridge?
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you very much. Committee reports, none. Resolutions, none. Ordinances, none. And other business, Mr. Bridge, I'll hand it to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. So legislation discussion, we got two rolling over from last week. One was the county hazard mitigation plan due to the size of the document. Certain council members wanted to postpone that vote, so it is back up for your guys' approval today. I kind of skimmed over most of that document. I know there's a question about riots. I did not see anything about riots in there. It's all more about natural disasters, so hopefully that answers that question. That's the 2020.08 mark, and that is again pulled over from last week, I mean, last council meeting. And we also have our tax budget that is up for approval tonight. I just want to stress, this is just step one of the overall budgeting process that we go through for 2021. These numbers that you see in there more likely will change by the time we get to the budget discussions. But we do have to have that approved and sent to the county by 15th. So that is up for vote tonight with council as well. So that's all for the legislation that we have on. So I will pass it back to council for open discussion on city business.
Thank you, sir. Council, who, does anybody want to go first? I noticed a couple of topics that people want to go over, so. Or not.
Weren't we supposed to be discussing the trash thing?
Yeah, that's, I mean, we can hit these in any particular order you guys want to go over, whether it's trash, the delay of the fireworks, you name it, whatever.
Any legislation discussion? So the last meeting, a lot of that discussion is suited regular session. So we're going to have questions for you now on any legislation we're voting on. That's also a use of appropriate time as well.
Right. Let's get the trash out of the way.
Okay. And I did, on the city manager report, allocated a special meeting in addition to one for water. That is there just in case we don't get everything.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, did you have anything on trash you wanted to go over?
Well, there's several things in regard to, I hope that the majority of you have looked over the specs that we have gotten from Kettering and from Fairborn. The city of Kettering has asked for a admin fee of about $53,000 to be paid by the successful hauler. The city of Fairborn adds, they do the billing for the trash, whereas Kettering allows Rumpke to bill. City of Fairborn adds approximately four dollars per month to each individual bill. That covers not only an admin fee, but also the street sweeping and possibly some other things that I'm not aware of. For example, catch base and cleaning, that type of thing. In my looking over the city specs, one thing that I do want to add is to the sites for the city provided dumpsters would be the one at the ballpark up next to the waterworks. That would be probably an eight-yard container picked up for the month of April, May, June, and July. That would be included in the specs. The other, go ahead.
I think it's somebody's TV, maybe.
Okay. The other thing.
Would that be your responsibility, baseball association, the one at the ballpark?
I'm sorry, Dale, I didn't catch it.
Would that be the responsibility of the baseball association, the one at the ballpark?
It could be, but you know, we've got Smith Park that is out there being provided for. We've got all of the other buildings, the pool, the skate park down there. So I guess my thinking was that if we could provide that.
I don't think it's going to add that much to it.
No, it's not going to add that much to the bid, no. But it would, it would save the the baseball association probably between five and $600, I'm assuming, over the term of their situation. Also, you know, in the event that we had an event such as the fireworks down there, then I think we could feel a little bit more obligated to utilize that dumpster.
And the page you're referring to, if you look on page 13 of our bid specs that has that on the front, I emailed these out a couple of weeks ago, but also just emailed them out today, so you can be fresh with your email. So that is page 13. And Mr. Cook, if you don't mind, I'll go down and read the list of facilities that we already service. That's listed in the current bid specs. Maybe that'll help some council members understand what we service. Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so city pool, that is seasonal from May 1st to September 15th. Street department, that is a weekly pickup. City garage, water department, that is a weekly pickup. Cemetery, that is weekly April through November, and then every other week, December through March. Fire station is a weekly pickup. Waste water plant is a weekly pickup. Smith Park is also weekly pickup. And then our city administration building, we have the recycle container there and also the trash, the regular trash. Those are both weekly pickup as well. And the reason why we have not in the past covered Haddix Field is because it is a leased property from the city. So if council does so choose to put that into current bid specs, we may have to go in just amend the lease that we have with them, just in case it does state that they are responsible for their own tax collection. But I think Mr. Cook is right with this, you know, we do use that facility for fireworks and potentially some upcoming events that we may have to have take place there. Throw that onto our trash bid to help out the association, since we do technically own the property, probably would not be a bad move.
And I'm sure it would probably help them out a little bit as far, you know, I'm sure they run on a tight budget down there, so I'm sure they wouldn't hesitate to agree to that.
Yeah. So, go ahead. Sorry, Mr.
That's it. I agree. I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Anybody have any objections to it?
None.
Nope. All right, so we can include that in the specs.
Can we go ahead and call for the vote on that, just to be official?
What do you want to?
Will, shall we do that in regularization, make all of these changes?
It don't matter. What I can do is just start making notes, and that way maybe we can just do it on one swipe. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just second it. So this is page 13. Facilities.
I've got a question before you go ahead, Harlan.
Now, when we say add Haddix Field, do we know what they currently use for dumpsters, like a six-yard?
It's an eight-yard.
It's a yard.
Okay, now, as far as pickups, we don't want that serviced year-round, I'm assuming. So is this something like?
April, May, June, and July.
Is that when the season is?
Right. Normally, it usually ends right around the 1st of July. They would probably have some cleanup after that. That's the reason I advocate to continue it through the month of July.
Should we go ahead and put it in for August, just to be safe?
No, I talked with Kirby. He felt that July would cover that.
So April through July, then. Okay, sounds good.
Cannot dump in here.
Go ahead, Mr. Cobb.
Last year, we, Mr. Cook and myself and Mr. Bridge, we had agreed we would pay to dump the dumpster after the fireworks. We didn't pay for it, the baseball association did, because the fireworks put all their boxes in there and all their trash. This sucker was full. You know, at least if we do it this way, like Mr. Bridge said, we've got it all in one place. And we get it picked up. Yes, they do do a tight budget when they run baseball down there. Because they get very little money. All they get is what they get for signing up kids. And they've got to buy pants, shirts, and stuff like that, baseball equipment.
Right.
So I agree with Mr. Cook on that, that we add that into there. Also, on the admin fee for Kettering, just to give you a better understanding, Kettering requested that Rumpke pay for this woman in Kettering to handle the billing. That's what the $53,000 is. That Rumpke had to cover the payment for this woman to take care of the building or billing and handling of any problems out there. That's what that admin fee is. I don't know how many houses we got in this city. Anybody know that?
I think 2,200, I think. Right around 22.
But I mean, therefore, we're on that. I mean, that's what that admin fee was. I would also like to see we bring back the dollar. All, can't think what it's called. You remember Mr. Mer?
Franchise fee.
Yeah, which we put towards the streets. I'd like to see that back in there, too.
Yeah, that is on page, on our bid specs. Page 19, it's item number 24. And if you want, it's only a paragraph. I'll go ahead and read it. But it says administrative fee. An administrative fee, franchise fee, they're kind of interchangeable in a way. But ours says, due to the extensive damage caused to city streets by the trash trucks, the city shall require reimbursement for repairs in the form of an administrative fee. The bid shall include the committee paying to the city on a quarterly basis a fee of $3 per month per billed account. The administrative fee will be submitted to the city for payment after the end of the quarterly billing cycle per billed account. The committee, permittee can communicate with the city which accounts are not paying, so the city can can enforce their appropriate city ordinances which require residential units to have trash collection by the committee. It says the population of the city can be allowed approximately 5,785, consisting of approximately 2,100 house residential units. So just a history on that with some of the new council members. When I took over in 15, that was the last year of the previous trash bid that we had with, who was the previous hauler? Was it Waste Man?
No, it was.
Was it Allied?
Yeah, it was Allied.
So prior, let's go, so when Rumpke, the city had the administrative fee on there before, but the general fund was always going so low that the administration just received that into the general fund and never used it for street repairs. But the last year, that contract, council and myself, we actually did allocate that $70,000 into the street department. And that was before the gasoline tax effect, so it did have a big positive impact on the street department. So I'm assuming it hopefully be something like that again to where if council does choose to bring this back in, that that money does get earmarked for street repairs, like it said in the previous contract.
Right. Well, the other thing is, the other side to that is you got to remember that that fee is going to get passed on to, you know, they're going to see it in their bills. So if we go with the franchise fee, their bill's going to be, you know, whatever, X amount of dollars higher than what it would be without it. So it's kind of like a catch-22 or a double-edged sword, if you will.
It is, and that's a good point. You know, I mean, if you guys put that on there, then the result's going to be the consumer paying for most of that, if not all of it.
Right. So what's council think about the franchise fee?
You're only talking.
Good, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Cobb.
You're only talking a dollar on the franchise fee per month.
What's the $3?
That was the old contract amount. It could be any amount you guys chose to forward. Yeah.
But that's money that can be designated towards our streets.
If it's a dollar, that's only going to be a quarter each pickup.
And I think that's where the $3 came in, because the billings, it was actually probably a dollar extra a month, but since it was billed quarterly, it was three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I think we, it was based off the old numbers. Like I said, I think we brought in around $70,000 a year.
You're right.
So, now the flip side of that, if you guys want to honest, just some truth, play both sides here. That was also too prior to the state increasing the gas tax. So we have additional revenue coming in from the increased gas tax, which we can use for road repair. Some cities do the franchise fee, some cities don't, and that'd be your guys' decision. But prior, prior to the city, one, having a general fund that was really low, we didn't have the additional revenue coming in for the gas tax. So now that we do, granted, I think what we're receipt for 2021 is going to be a little bit lower than projections just due to COVID outbreak and no one driving. But we can assume, and I know the gas stations are getting busier. I've been out, you know, they're getting busier, busier, busier. People are, sometimes starting to drive. But we, I think we will see a little bit of dip in revenue collection just based off the lack of people driving there for a few months. That is a big difference between when the previous council was arguing the franchise fee versus the new one. Now that that gas tax is in, the street department is actually, was looking pretty good prior to COVID hitting.
About how much are we getting on the gas tax?
I'm sorry, sir.
About how much are we getting on the gas tax?
We sent out that stuff months ago. I don't have it handled here, but it was a significant increase. Let me see what we are projected to.
Ballpark figure.
I'm going to pull up the budget, see where we're getting in there. Let me do something else. Just bear with me here. I'm searching on my computer. I wasn't under pressure to find it. It'd be right there. Okay, so what we've got here, so we are projected, you're just projections, and these were out of April 2019, so this is taking into, taking COVID into account. So in 2020, around 330,000, and in 2021, about 331.
Annually.
Yes. Now let me compare that to what we budgeted for. So that would have been 3, 2, 1.
Well, since our residents are paying 10 cents more per gallon for gas, I don't see a need to add an administration fee.
So we budgeted around $300,000 for this year proceeding, a little longer than what they projected to us. Now that should go down to giving, like I said, because of the COVID outbreak, people not driving there.
Yeah, my two cents on it is, I mean, that would be great to have the money, but I mean, I wouldn't want to pass that on to them, just, I mean, I know it's not a lot, but you know, every little bit helps when you can hang on to another dollar if possible. That's just my two cents, though.
I have a question, only because I drive on an alley that is a disaster. And I know that other alleys are disasters. And where does all of repairing that come in? Because at this point, the damage done on the alley behind me is because there are like three runs of big garbage trucks lifting big bins a week. And I can watch them go by and just watch the road crumble right underneath them. So, you know, there have to be in the alleys running down behind Main Street, it has to be the same situation all along there.
Well, first of all, trash trucks should not be going down. Alleys aren't built for a trash truck. I think they do that in some situations, like in your alley or some downtown. But alleys are typically not built for heavy machinery such as a tractor to go down. But the repair of that would have to come out of your general fund and then your street department.
But I think you'll find that the trash trucks that are utilizing this are the commercials and not the residential.
Right. Yeah.
And I did, after your meeting, I drove down your alley, and it is crumbling in spots, so I'll give you that. But yeah, those repairs would definitely have to come out of the street department and enter a general fund.
But a lot of your alleys will not handle them trucks now because trucks are a little bit wider, bigger. And they are heavier. Plus, they run the risk of tearing down lines going through the alley.
Yeah, and that's happened before, because there's some other streets that they used to collect in the alley, too. And the new trash bid that we're currently under, we actually took them out. We did not allow them to go back through the residential alleys. Because it's the power lines, it's low-lying limbs, and their trucks are wider, like Mr. Cobb had said. And alleys, like I said, are just not built for that kind of weight. I know in Oakwood, they give you, you know, they say they collect your alley, your trash in the alley, but they don't. They actually have city workers that go down and put the trash in a golf cart and take it to the end of the alley where the actual trash truck picks it up. So yeah, but.
I mean, while we're talking about residential trash in alleys, I got a letter from a woman who was pointing out that in a lot of cases, those people who had had their trash collected in the alley don't have access to the front of their house in terms of it's, there's fences, there's whatever. And getting that trash from the back of their house to the front of the house to pick it up on the front street is really difficult. So I want to share that with all of you, so you knew that there were concerns from citizens.
When they're going down the alley, where are they going? Jeff's?
Oh, no, I'm not talking about my alley. I'm talking about one of the alleys over on the other side of Jefferson. And she said, you know.
But your alley is crum.
They, my alley is a disaster. And I'm sure other alleys that have those big dumpster things coming down there are getting exactly the same abuse. But this is related to the residential pickup. And they, she was pointing out that in the old part of town, there are a lot of people who do not have easy access from the back of their house to the front to get cans out to the curb. I was just sharing that piece of information with you. And it makes it difficult for them to get those out.
Okay. How does some of the other council members feel about the franchise fee, which would, you know, give us a little bit of extra change in our pockets to cover street repair, but slightly bump up citizen bills on it, more or less?
I think we can forego it. Like I said, since we're paying 10 bucks a ga, 10 cents a gallon more for gas.
Right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'm all for adding an admin fee. You know, at this point, I think with the virus that we've got, I think the projected number for the gas tax receipts is going to be a lot less than what we're looking at. You know, the gas price is down considerably. I think, what, a dollar a gallon ballpark? So, you know, at that point, we're not going to get to revenue. And I think if we can get this money, get another street or two repaired and get ourselves back to square one on the street rebuilding program, I think we're going to be a lot better off.
Ms. Hopkins, how do you feel?
I'm against it. One of the reasons is I think people are being hit hard enough right now. Would they have, I know they have, some people have unemployment and they get $600 extra. But it just seems like everything's going up, especially groceries. And I'm not sure if we're going to raise the wastewater, so I don't think we should do it right now.
Okay.
Can I ask when it would kick in? January?
Yes.
We're looking six months out here.
Ms. Eggleston, what do you think?
I think I agree with you and Mr. Graham. I think we ought to hold off on it.
Okay.
And we will be bringing some wastewater information to you guys here very soon.
Okay. Okay, so I think that kind of points us in the direction on that topic. I was going to ask Mr. Vice Mayor and really anybody else that might have some info on it. One thing that I was interested in is, you know, in the past, when we would have a different company, I think we talked about this, Mr. Vice Mayor. You know, if you, your trash bin was full, for example, and you had two or three items left, whether it was a small box or, you know, whatever, some small piece of miscellaneous trash that you wouldn't be able to fit into your bin, you could set it on the side and they would still go ahead and pick it up. But I know that they're getting to those trucks to make it more efficient, where they don't have to get out of the cab. They use that arm and it reaches out and, you know, grabs the container and lifts it, and they don't have to get out of their truck. Is there something that we can do, though, to, if somebody, you know, has another couple more items that, you know, whatever, they did a spring cleaning and they just, they completely maxed out their trash can. I don't want to go back to the bags. I think that was a kind of a pain. But is there anything that, any kind of option we could add to give them just a little bit more accessibility to get rid of a few more items if they have one of those situations?
Normally, when you add to any trash truck, regardless of what the driver has to do, if he gets in and out of that truck, it's going to raise your cost.
Okay.
So are we able to, I don't know, I just thought of what Mr. Mayor said, Mr. Cook. I know when we did this current one we're under now, we just had the two. we termed something like an overflow cart, where they have to have like a bigger size. They say they won't qualify for the senior rate, uh, which we'll get to that later, because I think council wants to try to reduce that to fifty-five. So, let's say me, as a forty-two-year-old guy, all right, I have the biggest cart, but every now and then I, I have an extra, and I don't want to, I can't keep it out to the side because it's not a bin, and I got to store it in my garage for the next pickup.
Right.
What about like an overflow cart that says if you have the biggest two, you get, you can go ahead and get that smaller cart that the senior would normally use for a cheaper price, opposed to having to get in two of the sixty-four or the two of the ninety-six. Does that make sense?
Like a sixty-four. No. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I know. I mean, we can write the bid specs out however we want, because that would alleviate.
No. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I know. I mean, we can write the bid specs out however we want, because that would alleviate.
If you're going to have, uh, an individual residence with, let's say, the ninety-six gallon toter and possibly a thirty-five or a forty gallon sitting beside it, you're going to have him picking up two containers. So consequently, again, this is going to be an item that you can put in there if a customer wants to purchase the second container, fine, he can purchase that. But that's going to be the cost that's going to be added to him. But once you start this, if you're advocating that you do it as a normal option, then you're going to add to the cost of each and every homeowner.
Right.
At least manage it when they came back with their renewal rates. Is that the last one I, I said to Council, I wanted to clear up that number, because the prior one to get an additional sixty-four gallon was like three dollars? Times that by three, so nine dollars a quarter, eight seventy-five, I think it was. So, in this one, she had an additional ninety-six gallon only for eleven seventy-five a month, and I thought maybe that was a typo, and she meant to say eleven seventy-five a quarter. No, it wasn't a typo, so it'd be literally be an extra eleven seventy-five a month if you wanted additional ninety-six gallon dollar cart. That is thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents a quarter, just to have a ninety, uh, uh, extra ninety-six gallon cart. So, I don't know, I know ninety, I haven't, I, I mean, I don't know, I have a ninety-six gallon recycling cart, my actual trash is smaller, but I don't know, that just seems really high to have another cart.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
All right. None of the drivers, it doesn't matter what waste man, what waste you've got being picked up, their insurance will not allow that driver to get out of that truck. Because they've had drivers killed getting out. And insurance companies have come back, told all of them, allied, waste management, rumpy, man, and all of them, drivers do not get out of the truck.
Yeah. Mr. Mr. Vice Mayor, is there, I mean, is there, is that a, is that a common, I mean, because I know you're a little bit more familiar with this area. Is that a common question or a scenario that people ask about as far as extra trash?
Yes, it is a common scenario, but again, I would say that the, the normal everyday household can make adjustments in their trash flow.
Right.
That means instead of putting that cardboard box in the trash, you turn around and take it and put it in the recyclable.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so you're eliminating that.
Yeah.
My tr- my recyclable bin is full almost every other week. My trash can today had probably a third of a can full. Now, next week, if I get out in the yard, it's going to be full.
Who yard waste?
But these are the ways that you have to regulate what you're doing in order to commiserate what's going on out to curb.
Yeah. Yeah, you can most definitely adjust it. I was just curious if there was any options there. I know that, I mean, like I said, the old way was if you, if you had the tote, you would go uptown and, and buy, you know, a bag of, you know, the trash bags, and you would use those for your extra trash, but you know, those, I think that system is long gone and probably will never return.
Well, that was when the guy had the rear loader and there was probably a loader on the back, and he was throwing the trash.
Right.
Nowadays, with the one-armed bandit, that guy don't get out of the truck.
Yeah.
Is, is that the name of the one-armed bandit?
What it is.
Maybe an industry term, now I know.
Well, that's the only really trash concern I had, or a question, I should say. Does, uh, council have anything else on that topic?
I do. I do. I'm not, I don't like the idea of a city, um, contract, but I can appreciate the reasons for it. I don't think we're big enough to do it ourselves, uh, cost efficiently. But there is something I saw in both Kettering and Fairborn, um, that I like. And that is for, uh, disabled people that cannot or have great difficulty getting their trash out to the curb. They have a provision where certain disabled people, they can have pickup at the house. Do we have anybody, very many people that, uh, for that, that that would apply?
Again, you know, as both Mr. Cobb and I have explained to you, once you get that man out of that truck, you're going to end up paying more. Now, I have, in, in my neighborhood, I have two or three, uh, and I will say elderly people that are very similar to my age. I go over and put their can out and I take it back. This is a, this is neighbors helping neighbors. That's what we're supposed to be doing. So, you know, I understand the thought. In some neighborhoods, there are not people that are willing to help their neighbors. But somewhere along the line, somebody's got to pay for it. If you want the trash man to put your, go up to the door and get that, yes, you're going to pay more for that.
Have you ever heard anything, uh, like from citizens, Mr. Bridge, on anything like that?
Honestly, no. I ha- I mean, I think, I'm not, I don't want to say no, because I think vaguely something has years ago.
Right.
Being an ongoing problem now. And I'm going through Kettering, as Mr. Grimm had said, so when you guys get done talking, I'd like to actually read that paragraph. And it's on page four, uh, number, letter D. All Disability Service. And there's some other things, too, that I, I wanted to bring up off Kettering as well. Council to go ahead and get their stuff up.
What page was you on, Mr. Bridge?
On Kettering, page four.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to go for it, please.
Okay. So, it's, it's called Disability Service, and it says there'll be no additional charge above the rate. And I say that, doesn't mean that they're not going to just up the bid rate and just say it's not going to be, so I don't want to give false leading information, because I think they will just up the bid rate. Uh, there'll be no additional charge above the rate for regular curbside service provide for providing house side services for those households that meet the disability qualification standard, so apparently there's standards out there. And it says the city shall provide a list of residents that meet these qualifications as a sign up for services. The city estimates up to a hundred households may qualify for this service. However, the city is not liable nor warrants this estimate for the purposes of this proposal. The hauler shall use their industry expertise to provide a proposal that includes how a household would meet the disability service requirements. This is for Kettering. Kettering's probably got, I don't know, what's the population of Kettering? Forty-eight?
That's more than that.
Yeah, and then I also like on the Kettering proposal, too, they write under D, they have, and I didn't see this when I looked at it the first time, extra bags, and it says for three weeks following Christmas, residents may have up to three additional bags placed out with their disposal unit at no additional cost.
I would assume that means just generic bags they can pick up at the store.
Yeah, but I wonder if they, how much that shoots it up. Around Christmas time, I will be honest with you, we, there are some issues around Christmas time with people getting rid of whatever that, you know, well, we've all, my garage is an Amazon box warehouse. So many boxes out there, it's unreal, so.
Population of Kettering is fifty-five thousand.
I'd like to see council kind of beef up around Christmas time, because I think it does present problems. And it also presents overflow problems, when people go down to the pool and use a community recycling thing, because it's already filled up as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's been a big help, the, the recycling, and then, I mean, if you, like I said, if you go down there around Christmas time, that thing's an Amazon recycling bin, is all it is.
Everywhere. So, I'm just making notes as we go along, so we got the stable thing, we have to go back and talk about. Would council be interested in discussing any kind of additional services around Christmas time?
I, I, I'm interested in it for sure.
I am too.
Just making the notes here. What time is it?
I agree.
Six twelve.
I mean, I don't know what the cost would be, but, you know, especially some of the winter months, you get all that trash out there, and the wind's blowing, and it ends up in people's yards and stuff.
Yeah. And Mr. Cook may have some advice on that, because I know they're going to have to get out of the truck for those. Would they raise it up that much, Mr. Cook, if it's only for like maybe two weeks after Christmas or three weeks? For them to have to go out and get that additional baggage?
I would assume they're going to build some extra cost into your cost, yes. Because once, once they look at the specs, it's like anything else. They're going to gauge you out as a basic service, then once you start adding on like the additional bag pickups at, at Christmas, uh, the, um, disability type situation, if you're going to add these things in, these are going to bring up your costs across the board.
We have something in here now for Christmas. We'll be through the month of January, we pick up Christmas trees. Now, I don't know how many people take advantage of that. I know some people do. But a lot of people do artificial trees nowadays. Trying to see where that's at in our bids.
I think it was near page four or five, I think, or, I mean, fourteen, I think.
Christmas tree pickup, two point five. Page five.
No, oh, oh, it's on, it's on, Miss Marriage, right, yes. Yeah, so page fourteen of our bid specs, the current ones, annual Christmas tree collection. The committee shall hold a special collection in January, each calendar year, recycle live Christmas trees from residential units.
Think that's almost, I mean, I don't know if that's a carbon copy to every contract, but I'm sure that's got to be probably a pretty common one.
Did we not, as a city, provide Christmas tree disposal in the past years?
We haven't built a target of waste contract. Page fourteen, sir, number two, two A. So, I'm not expecting council to do this, but we are able to go ahead and renew our current everything deal with the proposal, like they, they came in here. So, that'll go on the table of council, chooses the stable place management. Um, you can also bid it, because I'm sure Waste Management will respond to bid two, but. Okay, so I got voting topics on facilities for addicts. Franchise fee, the disabled pickup, and then the Christmas season stuff. Yard waste is another hot topic.
Yeah.
Right now, you just throw it in with your current. Um, so I think what happens if somebody gets used to having a, maybe, for example, sixty-four gallon one through January, through March, April, yard work season comes around, now they have enough room to put it in with their regular trash and with, you know, the yard waste, so. Um, now you can just co-mingle it all together. Uh, prior to that, it had to be separated. Um, but now we can just throw it on one container, so. That is something that does pop up every year. It could be similar to people adjusting, like Mr. Cook had said, and I'm guilty of that myself with my recycling, half the stuff I throw away, I put my recycling cart. You know, so, but that's a discussion for council, I didn't want you guys to not have that on your radar.
Have you got any feedback in the city office, uh, on, uh, yard waste, Mr. Bridge?
No, everyone just says they want a separate container, separate container, which makes sense, but the hauler's going to charge you for that extra container. You know? So, what I always tell people is, I mean, there's nothing prohibiting someone in April, go ahead and get it for four months, and then give it back when you're not doing yard waste anymore.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it the way it is. I mean, it works fine for me. I haven't, I've never got any real calls or complaints about that, that setup, so.
It's, it, we, we get, we get it. Not like it's every single day, but people do just have general questions about what they're going to do if they're actually yard waste. Any other council members with, uh, yard waste on the top of their minds? Uh, anybody, citizens talk to you guys about yard waste? No? Is when we leave it as is and take it off to the discussion thing, then?
Yep.
Right now.
Yep.
Next out.
Alrighty, so anybody else on trash? Any more trash talking going on?
Are you going to lower the, uh, age limit on that, uh, low volume?
Oh, yeah, good call. What's the, the, what's the current age? Is it?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five? Yeah, I, I think, I, I mean, again, I'm going to check with Vice Mayor, but I, I think that's a good option. I mean, because there's a lot of people that just live by themselves and could really utilize that.
So, I don't want to overcomplicate it, but is this something you guys want to put stipulations on, like fifty-five and older? What if it's two people in the same household? Do they both have to be fifty-five or older? If it's a fifty-five, I mean, people are going to start splitting hairs on it.
Right.
Um, so, how do, how do you guys want to do that?
The count holder is fifty-five or older.
That'll work.
That way you put the name of the older one.
So, the count holder has to live at that residence, so we can't have.
Correct, well.
They have to live full-time at that residence, because I can see people just go ahead and get someone's service for someone, you know, down the road, or mother and a sister, or.
Yeah, I'd say they, I'd say they'd have to live in that residence.
I do too.
What, I mean, what about, what about the case where you've got somebody who's renting?
Runner, the same way we do it now, the runner has to, because they view, the customer, I mean, the citizen will call Waste Management, set up their stuff. At that point, type Waste Management will ask the question, and they'll have to send in proof that they rent there, they're a permanent resident, and then, and they're also of their age. Usually just scanning their driver's license.
Right. Yeah, that, that's, that works for me. Any, anyone else on that topic? All right, I think that's it, Mr. Bridge on trash.
Okay, so let's go back to the Christmas stuff, Christmas season. How, what do you think council wants to do to accommodate around Christmas time? Should we do three additional bags? I think there's some, let's get the discussion down before we go to the overall vote.
I, I like the bags. I mean, unless it's going to come back and cost us some astron- astronomical amount of money, which, I mean, I don't see it being extremely high, but I like having those as a possible.
How about putting that in as an option?
The purchase bags?
No, putting it in, it ends an option that the, what, three weeks after Christmas, uh, the bag would be accepted?
Right.
Regular bags?
Yeah.
So, we're taking out what's in there now?
It's not in there. That's from, uh, that was from, uh, Kettering.
That's not the Christmas tree?
Oh, no.
That's separate.
Yes, the Christmas, bulk items. Yeah, the trees, the Christmas pickup, the Christmas tree pickup, he's asking about the additional bag pickup for extra, you know, boxes and things like that. What do you think?
So, the option is to have, for three weeks after Christmas, they can put up additional bag, because Kettering put a bag limit, I think there's up to three bags.
I think that would be good, too. You don't want somebody saving up their trash and pulling it out then.
This for three weeks following Christmas, residents may have up to three additional bags placed out with their disposal unit at no additional cost.
Mr. Bridge?
Yes, sir.
Can you hold on for a second while I make a phone call about that?
Yeah, 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 that's, it's Mr. Mayor's meeting, and see if he's okay with it.
Yeah, go ahead. We'll just, we'll keep chit-chatting while you're doing.
Well, I mean, I can get you an answer on the bag.
Yeah, if you would like, feel free.
Be right back. But we're not going to buy bags.
No, I would, I would assume that they'll. No, I would, I would assume that they'll, they're letting you buy generic, you know, all-black bags from, you know, whatever Walmart or your local grocery store.
Like Hefty.
Right, there you go. You think three would be too many, you think it would be, you know, I mean, you think we could get it done with two?
I think you should put a size limit on the bag.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point, someone will show up with a construction site trash bag.
The dumpster.
What's wrong with this, it only holds forty gallons of paper, what's the problem?
Right.
Alright, so with you, three weeks, uh, what size gallon do you think is appropriate bag?
Forty gallon.
Forty gallon?
Forty.
So up to three forty gallon bags?
Right, sounds like, yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Agleson?
Yep. Does that mean that I can put out forty gallon bags all three weeks? Yeah. Have a free it all three weeks.
And what I'll do is I'll just copy this wordage down from Kettering's verbatim, just about, so it'll probably end up saying. For three weeks following Christmas, residents may have up to three additional forty gallon bags placed at their, placed with their disposal unit at no additional cost.
Okay.
How I anticipate is going after the work session, I'll go and clean all the bids picks up, bid specs. And then, so I'll even call in a special meeting, uh, tonight during the regular session. To discuss the water reconnections, and then finalize anything that we have on the, so you guys will actually see the final bid specs. When we have our special meeting for water disconnections, that make sense?
You said you wanted to discuss water connections and disconnections during the regular session?
Yeah, well, just, I'm requesting a special meeting for next week to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The other flip side of that is, we'll wait for Mr. Cobb to get back.
Okay.
When next week?
Well, we can also do what we did this week for the meeting, July twentieth meeting, is just meet at five thirty, discuss about the water connections, and then go on with regular session. We'll talk about that in regular session, um, coming up here.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll give him another minute or so.
Six twenty-four, we got plenty of time, so, alright, so we got Attic Field to vote on, franchise fee, uh, disabled pickup. Christmas season, the vault low volume, and we're X amount yard waste, um, while he is doing that, let me go back through here.
Let's go back to that disabled pickup, uh, are we going to do anything with that, or are we going to, uh, leave it as is?
Well, we'd have to know how many there would be involved, how many homes would be involved first.
Yeah.
Yeah, what Kettering said that there was, they would expect around a hundred homes possibly, so, and that's for fifty-some thousand residents. So.
If I have trash service here, and I am disabled, already disabled. Am I not able just to call my trash hauler and be like, hey, I'm now disabled, and do they have to by law come up and get my stuff, because I'm disabled?
That's what I was thinking.
You would think with the ADA, they would.
Yeah, that's.
Into the contract and raising it up, but they have, I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
No, that's a good question. Do you know, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Would, would it be apropos to have the planning director certify anybody that is claiming to be disabled? And make, uh, let's say the, uh. People we have out on the field stop and certify these people?
I don't know if the city is able to do that.
Plus, I don't know how that would affect their rights.
That, yeah, that'd be, that'd be tricky.
When it comes to ADA.
Because they were actually doing the bill. So since Waste Management still should be doing the billing for us, I think that should be something they would, so I just don't wanna get in the business of us going out and certify someone.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that just seems odd to me, but I don't know, I, I, I don't, I don't know. Well, Derek, you're a planning director, you have any experience in certifying any of that?
No, no, not at all, um, even, even in my experience in the building department, um, you know, requiring ADA compliance stuff as far as someone, you know, who's claiming they're just, you know, disabled. Um, it would definitely be a judgment call from an inspector.
It seems like that. I did a search, I found Waste Management has a thing that comes up and says, you call us and we'll take care of it. I was gonna say, I thought that should be on Waste Management side.
Well, let's keep it in there just for the vote, to see if you guys wanna go through it or not, but that's good information, please, uh, from the Wackowski.
Alright, Mr. Cobb, what'd you find out, sir?
Okay, your Christmas tree, this going, talking to Rumpkey. You pick a date you want trees picked up. In your, in your city. Okay, that's a three-week period or four-week period of the trash bags. You can have the trash bags anytime through the year. But the bag's gonna cost you two dollars a bag.
Uh, their bags.
Their bags, yes. They, that they will pick up was sitting beside the trash can.
We would sell on the city building?
No, let them get them from Rumpkey.
Oh, okay.
City has no involvement in that, they got to call Rumpkey, Rumpkey will send an individual out to deliver the bags.
Gotcha, okay.
Huh, interesting.
We were talking about just hefty bags, you know, like at Christmas, three extra bags.
No, you gotta use their bags.
Okay, Kettering, Kettering didn't have to, it's in their contract.
Kettering has to use their bags now, if, since Rumpkey has the contract, Kettering's gotta use the bags for the excess.
Does Kettering get a kickback on selling of those bags?
Do what?
Does Kettering get a kickback on selling those bags?
Kettering don't sell bags.
So they don't get no kick, nothing?
Nope.
In the contract, it says you can have three extra bags at Christmas for three weeks, doesn't make sense if you have to buy the bags from Rumpkey.
That is in the specifications, and they have taken exception to the specifications.
So there's not an extra charge for those pickups, because you basically, you're paying for the charge when you buy the bag?
Right, that's what it sounds like. So.
Well, I mean, that, maybe that's not a bad idea, because if someone has extra trash, they can just on their own accord go buy the bag, and it's gonna have no impact on everyone else.
And that's what I was. Go ahead, Mr. Cobb.
All you gotta do is if you have extra bags, they gotta call Rumpkey, they will deliver the bag to the individual that called. Then, you send it out your next trash day, you can have that three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Right.
They're not gonna charge you extra to pick that bag up.
That's why I think it's different in Kettering's than that, because they wouldn't have to say only three weeks a year.
Kettering has it all through the year. But Rumpkey, they buy the bags from Rumpkey, because they are a special bag.
That, that may be just how Rumpkey managed to deal with the contract. You need to do this this three weeks, well, that's fine, we do that, and this is how we do it, and you can do it all year, too.
Well, yeah, I guess that would be something, Mr. Bridge, we would just need to find out if that's an option that's always there for the citizens, I mean, because I didn't, if, if that is, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that, so.
I did not take it as a year-round option for the residents, I took it as three weeks after Christmas, because that defeats the whole purpose of them having the automated arms.
Right, I.
I, I think if you guys go and say, year-round, our citizens have the option to buy an additional bag, they're going to account for every week having to get out of that truck to pick that bag up.
No, that's, that's what I'm asking, is, I mean. Do they, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, that would add a cost, but is that something that they offer year-round, I mean, not that we would want it, but.
Yes, they do offer that year-round.
Well, two dollars a bag, that would be worth it for, um, yard trash or extra trash, but, um. I think we should think about something like this, and then if it's, if it is too much, because they gotta get out of their truck, then we can take it out. Are these negotiable?
Yeah, but you guys are asking for a lot of bidding to be done in a very short amount of time.
Oh, okay.
And this week, oh, sorry, go ahead, sir.
Not everybody is gonna do this, this is gonna be people that have excess bulk material, to get, they can't get their tote.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with you on that, I just.
By buying the bags like that, they will pick that up, if you do it every week, they will pick that up. But that's to the individual that needs the excess. Only one call, service to get rid of that, the city's not gonna pay for that. That, it's just each individual that needs that.
And the price of the bags covers the expense of picking it up?
Yes, sir, that trash truck pulls up, and that bag's there, he will take it.
Okay.
So, you're saying, so if, say, let's say that's like in their basic service, it would be something that you, we wouldn't need to put in the contract at all, you think?
We don't have to go into the contract, it would have to be dictated in the bid specs, and you would want that in the city, absolutely. Um, so you just put it in the bid specs, I like how Kettering did it, I just think that if they have that option every year, regardless of that two dollars covered the cost of that. I think when they put your bid numbers out, they're gonna account for them having to stop every, every time they pick up to get out of the car. Regardless of it's a two-dollar fee on the bag or not, that's, that's my concern.
Well, is there a way that, so I, is there a way that you could call them tomorrow and just get the details of how that works with them, and then we can kinda maybe, you know. Give you an up or down?
I think you just let me know either way, and then I will call when you guys know, so if you guys want it in.
There's just, I think there's just too many unknowns on it, really.
I just, I think you guys should just leave it to three weeks out of the year and call today. That's my opinion, um. I, I really do think they're going to, I don't think they're gonna sit there and say, oh, yeah, it's, we're not gonna up your price, but. Say, for example, if we bid it right now with just three weeks, what numbers would we get if we turned around and we bitted it again, but that in, with those numbers go up to collection rates, but I don't know, but yeah, I mean, I can make a phone call, that's not, it's not a problem at all. I just don't think we're gonna know their answer, if they say yes, we're not gonna know if it's yes or no.
Right.
We haven't seen the number.
Well, I think the prime focus, just like you said, was, the focus was those three weeks at Christmas, so I say my two senses, let's just check, let's add it for just those three weeks, and.
I agree.
So, I will call, because another thing, I was thinking, we can actually leave that on the table. I could make some phone calls, because I'm, like I said earlier, I'm gonna call in a special meeting for the water rates and then finish anything up on the trash bid. And that way, when we come back to it, hopefully I can get an answer from Rumpkey. You guys can go and vote on everything else, and that allowed me to go ahead and get all, most of the work done I need to get done to clean this up, and then on the next, just go in and clean up what we find off, like.
Are we bidding this out?
Huh?
Are we bidding this out?
That's for council to decide, you guys.
Up us, we can, we can continue to just contract through Waste Management, or we can put it out for everyone to bid on.
Okay.
So is council okay if we do that, just kinda not vote on that, and then make some phone calls and then finalize it at the special meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, if you've got a second, just piggyback off what, uh, Councilman Hopkins said, yes, so, uh, Waste Management put out these renewal rates. Council does have the option to go ahead and renew the current contract, that's gonna keep your senior rate at sixty-five, I already talked to Melinda about that, so if that does go back down, we would, this would not honor. So, if you guys don't, if you guys wanna renew with Waste Management with the current rates, which, to want my opinion. These are very aggressive renewal rates. I do have a feeling if you put it out the bid, it's gonna be higher. We can no way in she, way, shape, or form take what they're charging city of Kettering, or charging Fairborn, just based off the fact that they've got way more residents than us. So, just to be fair. I think in fifteen, when I took over. Uh, I did not wanna put it out the bid, and when we did put it out the bid, the, uh, current mayor at that point, no, no, I'm sorry, it was not the current mayor, it was a current, one of the current council members at the time. Uh, wanted to go ahead and bid it out, and it ended up costing more based off that bid than just renewing at the current rate, so that's something council's gonna have to think about. Council is okay with what you guys have and the increased cost, you could just renew with Waste Management for another couple of years.
But that doesn't give us any adjustments in our plans, correct?
That's the price, the fifty-five and up would have to be off the table. Um, so, I don't know how many people are gonna be impacted by sixty-five to fifty-five to save X amount of dollars a month to get smaller car. But that's all decisions, decisions you guys would have to make, when you put it out to the fair market, you run your risk. Um, I would just really take into consideration the renewal rates you guys got from Waste Management. Um, the feedback we got from cus, uh, citizens who saying they like Waste Management. Um, and the impacts you're gonna have if you do put it out to the free market for bid. But that's, unfortunately, that's your guys' decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I believe since we've got an increase, it needs to go out for bid. But I'll just about bet you that Rumpkey will beat that price. Because Rumpkey has been beating Waste Management on all their contracts. Waste Management wants out of this contract, out of the trash haul, all they want is commercial.
I've been much happier with Waste Management this time.
Well, that's you, but everybody else around is complaining, too.
I've heard a lot of positives, I think Randy did, too. I mean, Ms. City Manager, sorry.
What do you think, Ms. Agleson?
The people that I've spoken to, I've not gotten any complaints at all. They've been quite happy with Waste Management, but I've had several people wanting to have the senior age lowered.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I believe that before we entertain or even follow through with extending the contract. Since we apparently have a disagreement as to whether or not. The price going up is going to fall within the fact of the contract being altered. I think we need to go to the law director and get a dispensation.
Law director for what?
As to whether or not the contract can be extended with the price increase.
You mean without going out to bid, you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
That way, we're on solid ground.
Okay. Just my two cents, I wouldn't mind it going out to bid, just because I think if we could give them possibly another option, again, for the, the fifty-five to sixty-five, or the sixty-five to fifty-five, I think that could be a positive for a lot of people in town.
Well, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think, you know, adding the ballpark container up there. I think that bears some credence, I think that will make us a few more friends.
Yeah.
Well, here's the thing with that, too, if you guys go and lower that some sixty-five to fifty-five, the rest of the city's gonna be paying for it, because they're gonna raise, they're gonna increase that to cover their loss.
But some of the things I think we should do for the citizens.
Fairborn and Kettering, all theirs are sixty-five and up. They all don't go down to fifty-five, so what, what they're gonna do is they're gonna pull our demographics off the city and see that we are aging community, they're gonna realize that most of our people are fifty-five and up, and then what's gonna happen is you're gonna ripple it back to everyone else paying for a smaller container, so that's just something you guys will all have to think about. All about reducing that to ten, down ten years, but you gotta look at, one, how many people fall into that category, and two, is it worth the cost increase that you're gonna get because you're lowering that?
We don't know until we put it out for bid.
Sure, sure, absolutely, I'm just letting you guys know.
Yeah, I mean, I think competition is always good as far as pricing.
And the things we were wanting to add was. And the things we were wanting to add was Haddix Field, extra trash at Christmas. Was was there anything else? Oh, the fifty-five.
Yeah.
Fifty-five, I'm gonna get my list here. Uh the facility at Haddix Field, the franchise fee, disabled pickup, the Christmas season, and then fifty-five, the low volume.
Did we, did, was the franchise fee something everybody? I I think that was a.
I thought we didn't want that.
Yeah, I think the kind of majority feel was not to go with that.
There's no official vote.
But uh we, yeah, we can discuss that in the uh regular council meeting.
Work session.
Say it again, Mr. Bridge. I didn't hear you.
Unable to vote and get all this stuff done squared away in work session. You don't have to wait to regular session to vote.
Right, but I mean, I mean, we, you're right. I mean, we can do it in the session unless council would rather wait till the regular session.
What would the vote be for? To go out and bid it and put those things into the new contract?
That should definitely be the first vote, if you guys want to put it out to bid or not.
Right.
Then you follow with the subsequent ones with the facilities, the franchise fee, the disabled person, the person.
Yeah, basically, you would make them, you would make the motion to add or take away whatever is you see fit.
Can we do a soft vote on? I'm sorry.
Kennedy, is it possible to do this so that we get a basic kind of a thing and then have optional costs on add-ons?
No, I think because then it would, you would be getting um, you know, you would technically need multiple bids. You would need a bid for your basic and then another one for options, if I'm understanding you right.
Also.
What do you mean by add-ons?
Well, I mean, if you get a basic contract that looks like what we've got now, and then you say, what if we added this on? What if we added this on?
You mean like the ballpark, then extra track at Christmas and the fifty-five or lower?
Right.
Okay. Can we take a soft vote on that franchise fee? Because I don't want that to be in with the other three things if we don't all agree.
Well, you you can't really call it a soft vote. It would just, you'd have to make a motion to do it with or with or without it, since there's no way around this, you know? If you if you would like to make a motion, Ms. Hopkins, with, you know, the items we've discussed or without some of those items, and you can do so and move on from there.
I'd like to make a motion to take a vote on Haddix Field, extra trash at Christmas, and fifty-five for the smaller trash cans and not include the franchise fee.
What about disabled?
Um the the company takes care of that theirself.
No franchise fee and no disabled service.
Right.
Is that also to put it out for bid or, well, yeah, it would have to go out for bid.
That's that's to put it out for bid, yes.
Okay, so we would need a second for that to vote.
I'll second it.
Who is that?
Uh Mr. Vice Mayor seconded.
Oh, okay.
So just to reiterate, that would be to put it out for bid, Haddix Field addition, the Christmas uh three weeks of Christmas trash bags, um no franchise fee and um, what am I forgetting?
Lower age limit.
Oh, yeah, they lower the age limit.
Mr. Mayor, can you go ahead and clarify the bags um that I will go ahead and call then? I thought we're gonna leave that off so I can get clarification on that. How do you want to handle that?
Uh, well, if we if we do it without the bags, we would have to come back and redo another vote, correct? Would we have time to do so is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, what I would do is I would go ahead and amend the motion just to do the facilities and the low volume and then put it out the bid. And then what I will do is go and get the information from Rumpkey and Waste Management about how they do that. And if they have to buy, can they do their own bags or they have to actually buy the bags from the particular hauler? Does that make sense?
Can't you just make it optional on the bag?
That's up for you guys to decide.
Ms. Hopkins, you made the motion. That is up to you.
I'd like to do it with um not the trash company's bags with hefty or something like that. It doesn't have to be that brand.
Well, do you wanna what Mr. Bridge is asking, if you want to leave that whole little section or that whole section off while he does some checking and then we can readdress it as far as that particular piece?
Well, it wouldn't be part of the bid then. It would be later, we would be asking about it, right?
My guess is that if you don't put in, if you say we can supply our own bags, they're gonna jack it up right now because they don't know the quality of the bag you're gonna put out there and they're gonna have to deal with the consequences of it.
And they're gonna assume that everybody will be putting out three extra bags for that time period.
And garbage, you know, and and putting out garbage bags that will break and be all over the place and a mess.
Okay, I'll, we'll leave it out until Randy checks on it.
Okay.
So that leaves us just Haddix, Ball Field, and um fifty-five and lower?
Correct.
Okay, I make a motion to add that to the um contract and put it out for bid.
You've got, you've already got the motion there.
Oh, that's right. And it's already been seconded.
Withdrawn.
Is that what you would?
You can amend your. You can amend it.
Second, withdraw the motion and remake a new motion.
Okay, that sounds good, too.
Okay, I'd like a motion to put the trash contract, the Waste Management con- trash contract out for bid and to include um the Haddix Ballpark and trash cans for fifty-five and lower, seniors fifty-five lower to.
Fifty-five and over.
Fifty-five and over. Oh, you're right.
Okay. And you, okay.
That, should I have said something else?
No, you retracted your original motion, correct?
Yeah, he did.
Yes, and then this is my new motion.
Okay, so do we have a second on the new motion?
Second.
It was a second.
Thank Ms. Noakowski. Or was it Mr. Vice Mayor?
Think it was Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
A discussion before Ms. Burner calls a vote. All right, when you're ready, Ms. Burner.
All right, Mayor Lowry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Grimm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Cobb.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Aggleston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Yep.
That motion's accepted seven zero.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burner.
I made my first motion.
Awesome.
Oh, no, my second, my second.
And it was a good one, too. You guys did a fantastic job of getting this uh trash contract even better than what it was before. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bridge, what else do you have?
For the work session.
Hold on.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I got.
Uh what do we got? We've got like nine minutes. Mr. Kick Care is not gonna be joining us this evening, is he? All right, I'll hold that question off till the next meeting, so um that's all, that's all I have.
I have something.
Mr. Grimm.
Uh Coffee and Donuts with council. We had talked about having it in July.
Well, that was canceled, wasn't it?
Well, until the state lifts the ten uh less meeting requirement, I don't think you guys would even plan anything. Because he was supposed to remove that July one, but I think he extended it, which you'll see in my shelter house reservation discussion. That's what I'll bring up, too.
Yeah, he was supposed to announce, you know, whether he was gonna extend it or or let it let it expire. And he extended it by another week. So I think he's supposed to do an announcement sometime this week.
Although I do, I like Mr. Cook's idea about the individual wrapped Cheryl's cookies. But I did notice that Speedway now individually wraps their donuts. So the coffee donuts, they could actually do it.
Awesome.
I vote for Cheryl Cookies, though.
All right, anything else, counsel? All right, um so we will uh need a motion to adjourn and we'll meet back at seven o'clock.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Cobb and a second by Ms. Hopkins.
All right, Councilman Grimm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Cobb.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Aggleston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Lowry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes.
Except at seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. We will be back at seven o'clock. Um see you soon.